Public to be let in. There we go.
He says we're live.
Says we're live? We're live, are we live? We are alive, but are we live?
Oh, okay, yes, we're good.
All right. We'll call the meeting together, or call me into our, excuse me, I'd like to read the land acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge that the County of Halliburton is located on Treaty Twenty, Nishisagi Territory and in the traditional territory of the Nishisagi and Chippewa nations collectively known as the Williams Treaties First Nations, which are Curle Lake, Rama, Hiawatha, Alderville, Scoogag, Osalei, and Georgina Islands First Nations. We acknowledge the shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area and recognize its original indigenous inhabitants as stewards of its land and waters since time immemorial. I have a motion to adopt the agenda unless there are any changes required.
Just before you do that, Andrea, are you going to, are we gonna add a piece under new business?
Yeah, it has been added recently, so the version on Civic Web now has a nine point two under new business before the facilities report, just a follow up from the county council budget discussion.
Okay, great, great.
So the two twenty-five budget discussion under point five nine, okay? Okay, they'll move this two second to them. Paul, thank you very much. Next thing on the agenda is the declaration of conflicts of interest. Anybody have any conflicts of interest? No, seeing none? Next item is a consent agenda. The consent agenda is the the library board minutes from the last meeting twenty twenty-four, the librarians' report. And circulation, circulation statistic, yeah. I haven't got the right stuff in front of me here, sorry about that. Yeah, okay. Is there anybody who wants to pull out any part of the consent agenda for detailed discussion? If not.
It's not to pull out for detailed discussion, it was just a delight to see the Dorset, Dorset statistics for October, and I know it's a, it's just the first month, but I think we're off to a bang there and and let's, let's hope we can keep those numbers up.
Great comment. All right, a mover and seconder please for the motion, moved by of Walt. Seconded by Cease, thank you. You notice I've given up on the clip thing, eh Cease? He didn't hear, did you hear me Cease? Oh, he's on, he's on, sorry, it's okay.
There we go. I did not hear you, David, I'm sorry. But I'm sure it was something absolutely.
It was stunningly important. I just commented that I've given up on the, on the clip thing. All right, all in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. Now we're going to the financial report, item six on the agenda. Turn it over to the boss to take us through that, how's that? Go ahead, Andrea.
Don't have anything to specifically highlight in terms of to flag for concern.
Are we all on track?
We're on track, we have, we are behind on our invoicing, so we have things that are still to be processed, so this is a report to end of October.
Any questions for members of the board on, on the item in, in general? Okay, seeing none. If I have a motion to move and second the financial report as presented, moved by Paul. Seconded by Jen. All in favor? Okay, anything on library policy? We didn't see anything on the agenda, no? Business arising from the minutes, I didn't see any. New business, the facility report. So there's a rather extensive facility report passed to the agenda for each municipality as part of our library family. Andrea, do you want to say anything about it in general, or Paul, or anybody else? You okay? All right.
Yeah, yeah, so again, this is the facility report.
Assume we've all read it.
Do, do every fall. So it's just reporting on facility issues and what's been resolved up to this point this year. It's broken into three categories, so the first one is what's been resolved so far. We have some outstanding issues, so some issues that I currently talk to the municipalities about, and then some projected ones that will take a little longer to complete. This is just compiled from reports from staff through the health and safety inspections, and then we do the yearly joint health and safety committee inspection once a year, which is through the county, so that's where all this comes from. A lot of it that is in progress, I'm already speaking with the different municipalities about the different issues, and we're working on them.
Any questions from any members, any of the elected members on the board? This is kind of your bailiwick more than ours. As non-elected, okay. Paul?
I did have one thing I wanted to ask.
Yep.
I'm just curious, it's sort of an academic or hypothetical question, but if there was a, a public safety kind of issue, let's say there was a, a trip or a slip or a fall.
Yeah.
I'm curious who would bear responsibility, or where would the responsibility lie? Would it be with your family? Or would it be within a respective township wherever the accident might have happened?
Oh, I think it would be probably be both, a little bit of both. If I was on the other side of that lawsuit, that's the way to work here. Not that, not that I plan on anything like that, but anyway. Okay, I don't see any questions or other comments. They have a motion to move and second this motion being resolved, the County Public Library Board approves the facility report and the library board approves the CEO, chief librarian, approves the CEO, chief librarian to present the facility report to all municipal CEOs, CAOs. So these reports will go to your municipal CAOs who, I assume, will initiate whatever action is required to get the work going and to, to resolve these issues, okay? Motion to approve? Jen? Uh, second, Walt, thank you.
David, can I just ask a question based on Paul's question?
Yeah.
Would this be one of those cases where joint and several liability comes into play? Is, is, would this be a classic joint and several case, do you think, if that were to occur?
Yeah, that would be my, my opinion, yeah.
Yeah.
That's why I said both.
Yeah, that's right, but that would be the, I guess, the title under which it would fall, that we're basically all on the hook. Unless otherwise proven.
Not sure the, the board would be on the hook, so to speak. And I'll, I'll tell you why I say that, Jen, is because the report that we just approved, our job is to, is to take a look at our facilities relative to our customers or using in a report to the municipalities, that we censor some deficiencies here. So by making that report, we're saying, look, this is our sense of what needs to be done. Go do it, because we can't do it, we don't own the property, we don't prioritize the budget for the capital works that the municipalities do. So that's why I think it would rest mostly between the county and the municipalities, not so much the board.
Okay, got it.
Okay, all in favor of that motion? Carrie, thank you very much. Now we're going to go to item nine B, which is the, or nine two with the twenty twenty-five budget discussion. Okay, who wants to take this off? Andrea, do you want to do it? Or a member of the, of elected officials? Is there, there were some issues at county council today, I understand.
I can start, sure.
Okay.
So some questions came up at the county council discussion this morning about the budget. So I just wanted to provide a little bit of further context. So on June twelfth, the library board here was presented with a staffing model review proposal with the goal of reducing the library's budget by a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, so in that we eliminated the admin support coordinator role. We redistributed tasks from that portfolio to the other positions. We reduced the salary of the CEO and deputy CEO. We changed the programming and outreach coordinator role, coordinator role from full-time to part-time. And then in doing that, so that portfolio also changed, so some of the responsibilities from the programming and outreach coordinator role were shifted to the systems and technology coordinator role. So things like doing frontline programming, tech support for patrons, digital literacy sort of programming for people of all ages. Because we were reducing the programming and outreach coordinator role, we needed to absorb those tasks in another position, so those moved more towards the, the systems and technology coordinator role. So, under the previous CEO, we had a team of seven in the admin team, so there were six full-time staff and one part-time. As a result of the changes approved on June twelfth by this group, we moved to four full-time positions and two part-time. So immediately upon approval of that report, we moved forward with hiring because the positions were vacant, so we filled three of the positions internally. The two positions that we posted for internal and external applicants to apply for were the communications coordinator role and the systems and technology coordinator role. After the guidance was given to me by the library board to proceed with the staffing model as it has been presented, I was contacted by county staff, by Mike March, to discuss ways that the county staff may be able to support the systems and technology position in the library. We had some phone call conversations and email back and forth. We broke down the entire job role in its new iteration and went sort of task by task responsibility for all the different parts of that role as it was newly configured. Some of the aspects of the role IT said they could assist with, some they could partially assist with, and others they could not assist with. I mean, part of the part, the things that they could not assist with was the parts that had been moved from the programming and outreach coordinator role, so the frontline support to patrons. There were a number of things that they could not assist us with. So given that, I made the operational decision to move forward with the plan as it was agreed to by the library board to post those two remaining positions. As you know, the position, the systems and technology coordinator position has been filled, it was filled over the summer. We have Graham, who's currently in the role, behind the scenes working on the tech setup here. The communications coordinator position was filled for two days. The person who came to the role, once she learned more about the role, decided it wasn't for her. We have since reposted the communications coordinator position on Thursday. Internal and external applicants are welcome to apply. On Friday morning, I received an email from Scott Ovelle, the Director of Economic Development and Tourism. He said that he had seen the communications coordinator posting for the library and suggested that perhaps we could discuss having a, a shared position with the county because it had been something they had been talking about. So that is kind of the, the order of how things happened through the summer with filling those positions. Yeah, I just.
Okay, that's, that's good. So just to encapsulate, so in, in June, you brought the, the report about your, remember last year, before June, we were asking, we asked you to give me back to the staffing restructuring plan, which you did. And that was based on the fact that, you know, we had a reduction from the, our allocation from the county, so we had to think through, through how we were going to handle that. We, as a board, approved that document, which contained both the, the IT position and the communication position. So we went ahead with that on the IT side. In the interim, in July, you were contacted by the county, you said, hold it, let's talk about this IT thing, which you did. And after that discussion, it was your, your opinion that the county could not provide the kind of IT support that we needed. Given the fact that we had cut so many other positions and we're trying to integrate all the work together. And there was a lot of IT support required that was singularly focused on library issues, nothing to do with the county at all. The other position, the county coordinator, or the communication position was, was posted, and we had somebody hired, I met the young lady, and she, a couple of days after we hired her, and she showed up. She decided this place was not for her, so she's left. We've since reposted that, but we haven't filled it, so that's still continuing to sit, sit empty. The county, Steve had asked us to talk, talk to him about that, which we will, before we go, go any, forward any further and, and put someone in that position, okay? So that's the state that we're at right now. I think that encapsulates all of the work that's been done to this point in time. And so right now, we're, we're, as a library board, going to proceed with keeping our IT person in place, given the discussions that have taken place, and then the need that we feel that we have to have that position specifically located in our branch, in our, in our library to handle all of our in-house services, both here at the, at the head office and at, and all of our branches. Okay, discussion, any, any questions, Jen? Go ahead.
So, we'll be asked at county council, no doubt. How would splitting the role not have worked? What, what was your, your thinking behind saying, no, actually, it has to be full-time? There are things that the IT at county can't do, but if we, if we divided it out and we kept just those things, that also would not work for us. Can you talk, can you just talk us through that? That decision?
I can't, but Andrea has had a whole bunch of discussions with the IT people in county, so I'll let her opine on that.
So we need in, in, running the library is a team effort, so the administrative team works very closely together to problem solve, to brainstorm. Situations come up all the time where it requires all of us to bring our own expertise to the table. And the person in the systems and technology coordinator role brings all, not all, but the, he's the primary person who brings the technical understanding of all the systems that happen behind the scenes and how things connect together to the table, to, so we have to, the, you know, when we have a change in our interlibrary loan software system, for example, or there, in the library, there's the services that we offer to the public in person, but there are many things that we offer digitally. And there's software that we use for eresources, for ebooks, for coordinate people, what they're checking in, checking out, how much money they many, many different library systems, and they all have to talk to each other and communicate with each other. When, when a change is implemented, there's what the public sees, but there's always a whole bunch of behind-the-scenes things that the public never see, and very often they're technical in nature. Things come up all the time. Because we are connected with so many different types of software, there are things there's glitches all the time, and we need to respond and react, and sometimes it impacts all the library systems in Ontario, and other times it impacts just us, we need someone on the ground who's able to work through that, to communicate with the team, who brings that hat to the table for many different discussions that we have and, and problem solving. As I mentioned at the beginning, we also changed the configuration of that possession when we did the reorganization, so what has been added that the previous person in that role was not doing very much of is working with patrons, so doing tech help, doing writing programs, so the, we have some plans in the works now to, around Christmas time to do, you know, you know, you've got this new device, like, how do you set it up? How does it work? So things that our in-house IT department that serves the county, that serves the library and the municipalities, they're not, it's not their portfolio to, to handle.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's very helpful.
I, I think, I think the way to look at this is there's two sides to this equation. Number one is the role that the IT person plays internally with our staff team. The, the technology that's used is, is, you know, to some extent prior, proprietary to that kind of an interrelationship that goes on all the time. It's just not one, one piece of work that sits by itself, there's a team of people On the other side of it is the technology offerings that, that we now offer to the public, which weren't part of that original person's responsibility, I don't think Aaron was doing a, a lot of that, but now we put that on.
So it's, it's more helping, helping the patrons.
That's a better way to put it, so that's kind of the two, two-pronged approach. I don't think the county IT can do those kinds of things for us. Simply because, you know, here's, here's a perfect example. Under normal circumstances, say we have a, a library board meeting, our IT person is sitting in an office just outside the door. Without that person there, we'd have, and here depending on the county for that help, we'd have to have an IT person sitting here just in case something went wrong with our IT connection, because we are feeding this broadly across YouTube to our, to our, our customers. So, Cease, sorry, you had your hand up, let me stop talking and turn it over to you, make sure you're off mute.
Yeah, my, my, my question is kind of like a follow-up to what, to what Jen was talking about, and it's not really a, a question, just recognizing how people think and how people make decisions, especially when you're dealing with county council. Is there any way, shape or form that we could get some kind of a report that would be, that would be written by either staff that's from the library in conjunction with staff that's at the municipal, that's at the county, to just clearly identify some of those yes, we can do's and no, we can't, so when it goes before the county council members, they got a clear understanding that now both the IT department at the county and the library have agreed that this can or cannot be done. I'm not challenging anything, I'm merely saying that if we had that clarity come before county council, I think this entire discussion would probably disappear.
Yeah. Andrea, could you work with the IT team at the county?
Forward, we already have someone in place in this role, and it might, the time might be better instead of looking at how we can configure the communications role, because that one's still vacant.
I think you have to do both that. Yeah, we take the communications one as a given. We're going to work with the county on a, on a common communications person. There's a process to take that forward, you and the, and the HR person at the county and Scott to work out. This is a specific request around IT. And I know you've had a whole bunch of discussions with the county IT already, and you guys have kind of figured out what could work and what couldn't work, I think just putting that on paper for the county council have in front of them, when this matter comes up, and that's a bunch of time, it's really all that's necessary. I don't see this being a laborious piece of work, but something that's probably informative, I think we'd like to see that as well. Is that okay, Cease? Jen, go ahead.
I, I just wonder if what has already been produced between Andrea and IT, where they've gone through that differentiation is sufficient. I don't believe Cease has had an opportunity to see that, I was just forwarded it earlier today by Andrea when I made the suggestion that we talk about this. So I, I think, Andrea, unless you disagree, I think that, that document is already more or less in place.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping would be the answer, Jen, there's a lot of work that's been done, it's just a matter of refreshing it and we're done.
I think though, it, so it is in place, but in order to make it, like, it would need to be accessible, it's not really for, like, the public audience if it is going to be put on Civic Web, then no. So is it an internal document?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, then if it's an internal document, I was.
Okay, great, great.
Okay, that sounds good, Paul?
I just wanted to ask the question, if the timeliness of interaction is critical to delivering library programs as far as the IT resource being in place, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Walt, go ahead.
Yeah, I think myself, I'm just speaking for myself at the county council, that I would definitely like to have a, a bit of a report from Michael March and his team in regard to this situation and you, and him letting us know that, know that his team couldn't handle a lot of the issues that you're dealing with, Andrea. Just, just, you know, because, like, we are, we represent the taxpayers' dollars, like, how, how much money is this job? It's fair, probably a fair probably substantial amount of money, not that you're gonna tell me right now, I understand, but, and I, I probably could find out very quickly. But, so I, I just think that we, we should definitely, I, I'd like, today, Mr. March didn't really comment on it, but I would like him to, to comment on it. That's just my opinion, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Walt, and I think, I think before any comments, I appreciate your, your comments, but before we get into commenting from either side, let's get Andrea and Mark to flesh out the discussion a little further, and then make, make that report, a joint report between Andrea and Mark to the county council, how's that?
That sounds great to me, like I say, we're, it was brought up today, but it wasn't brought up with a lot of detail. And I think we, we'd like to know really what, what the IT at the county could do and what they couldn't do, and just explain to us why, that's, because like I say, we represent the taxpayers.
Yeah. This can be, this can be number twenty-five or thirty or fifty or a hundred, whatever it is on your service review that you guys are doing.
Yes, you're right.
That's an option. Okay, we'll leave it at that, thanks everybody for your comments. The next item is the municipal roundtable, I think we've just had it, thank you very much, unless you want to add something else, Jen?
It might, no, I'm not on mute. I, I just wanted to circle back regarding the comms position. Andrea suggested that there was a scope there. David, you suggested that it, it's already a go, so has that decision already been made operationally? And if yes, what information might we take back to county council on that?
Let me set the stage for you again. It was, as, as part of our June twenty-first report, there was a position. And that, we posted it and hired, and hired the person. They lasted two days, they got here and thought, oh my God, this is what I, what, isn't what I thought it was going to be, so said, we're not coming back.
Got all of that?
We reposted the position, but it has not been filled, we haven't done any interviews, it's sitting there just as a posted position, we can pull that for now. Sit with the county, have some discussion, and figure out what we're gonna do.
So is that something that the board is supposed to discuss, or is that an operational only and the board will be informed?
That's an operational only, and then the board will be informed.
I see.
We have a motion for, with direction from the library board to ask me to work with county staff to look at both options, or?
The board wants that, as far as I'm concerned, the board's just gonna give you a direction to go work with county staff and figure it out. And report back to us.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion, I'm sure.
Okay, great, just wanted to understand the process, thank you.
No formal action. Like that, we're just gonna have a discussion, sorry, Cease, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, I'd be glad with that, and again, what we've been looking for, a, a, and, and, and we just don't have clarity. I think Walt summed it up pretty well, is we just don't have enough basic information from both parties to give us an idea of what we can do and can't do for the purposes of funding and for understanding more than anything else the challenges that are, that are taking place within, within the library system in, in, in Halliburton County.
And, and I agree with that, Cease, that's, that's a good point, and you know, don't forget, these are, these are moving subjects, you know, June we make a decision, July on, on the IT. July, the IT, Mark comes along and says, hey, I've got some ideas, they thrash it, he and Andrea thrash it out. Decide, at least from our end, that, you know, we can't, we can't blend it with the county IT, so we're gonna go on our own. It's timing, it's, it's, it's a It's timing, it's, it's, it's a moving target. We, we've got to maybe collectively between the county and the library board, sit down and figure out strict timelines for certain things before steps are taken. I come from a world where when a, when a, when a county council has approved a budget or a city council has approved a budget, that's direction of the staff to go and do it within the parameters of the budget being approved. And I'm not, I'm not used to council coming back and say, oh, hold it, hold a second now. We want some more work done. That's usually not the way it works. But in this case, I don't think I don't think that, that, that discussion and sort of that, that working relationship, we've got to get better at it from our end, for sure. And perhaps from the county end as well. And that, that's, that's not a negative thing. That's a positive thing, saying let's make sure we work together a little more closely. And I'll stop there. Jen, have I answered your, we, we answered your question?
That's what I need. Thank you.
And Cease, you're good? Walt, you're okay? All right. Next item on the agenda is closed session. We don't have one. Next meeting date is? Who knows off the top of their head the next meeting date? I've got the wrong idea.
December eleventh.
December eleventh, okay. Good. All right, motion to adjourn. Be resolved, the November thirteenth, twenty twenty four regular meeting of the Halliburton County Library Board be adjourned. It is now four thirty PM. Moved by Adele, seconded by Cease. Thank you very much. All approved. All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you very much, everybody. See you in December.
Bye, thanks.
Take care, everyone.
With the motion? Be good? Now, there's minutes from the last meeting. I think I've signed my signature.